County council meeting is now in session. The Honorable Kristy Cox will give the invocation pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you've given to us. We thank you for our men and women in uniform, our first responders, and we ask that you watch over them and protect their families as they sacrifice to serve us. I pray for peace and tolerance in this world. I pray that truth would win out over politics and agendas. I pray for compassion to those who are less fortunate than we are. And I pray for wisdom and guidance to all our elected officials and ask for your help tonight to make decisions that are in the best interest of the people we serve. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe we have one oath of office. Someone up, you must be the one.
She's ready.
Tracy Pluckett.
She's ready.
Thank you, sir. Well, you can keep it.
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Appreciate your time.
Keep your service.
She was ready. She was continuing. Wait on her next.
Okay, if you're looking at an agenda, we won't have the appearance. The sergeant can't attend tonight, so we'll do it at the next meeting. Nobody signed up for a public forum, so do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion. All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. What'd you say?
Aye.
Aye.
Where did I put my nerve pills? I forgot to take one. Okay, old business. So this is gonna be our first. I'm gonna provide a nomination from the floor.
Let's do public hearings first, please.
Oh, did I skip something?
No.
Public hearing.
Okay, sorry about that. I split too many pages. Oh, I did. Okay, public hearing. Council to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by and among York County, South Carolina, Black &amp; Decker, a company previously identified as Project DWT, operating company, and Crescent Communities LLC, a company previously identified as Project DWT developer, each acting for itself, one or more affiliates, and/or other project sponsors, including but not limited to Stanley Black &amp; Decker Incorporated. Collectively, the companies pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad lorem taxes with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county, the project, the benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the companies and the project, certain special source revenue credits in connection with the project, and other minors related thereto. Anybody here want to speak against? Against? Anybody want to speak in favor? Yes, sir. Be sure to give your name and address for Karen.
Okay. Hi, my name's Craig Zalinski. I am a resident of Tega Kay here in York County, but I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of my company, Stanley Black &amp; Decker. Just like to say, on behalf of Stanley Black &amp; Decker, I'd like to thank you for your consideration of this incentive package that you're reading tonight. It's been a very competitive process, you know, across multiple states where we've had manufacturing facilities, and we're just very happy to be able to add these jobs in York County, especially for those of us that live here. So, pretty exciting time. Just want to thank you again for that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Anybody else want to speak in favor? Do we have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion. All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item. Council to hold a public hearing and consider amending and third reading of an ordinance to amend the code of the county of York, Chapter 51.05, water and sewer rates and charges, terms and conditions of service, Sections B-2 and B-10, in order to amend the water rate schedule and sewer rate schedule and to provide for other minors related thereto. Anybody here want to speak against? Anybody want to speak in favor?
Need a close.
Second.
Discussion. All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item. Hold a public hearing, consider third reading, case number 1733, request to his own property from AGC to RUD at 228 Cameron Road. Anybody here want to speak against? Anybody want to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion. All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And I think I got all the public hearings, I believe.
Yep.
Okay, back to where I jumped to. I'm gonna nominate somebody from the floor. I found out how to do this, so I'm gonna read it, make my nomination, then we have the two, unless somebody else is nominated, two, three, whatever, people that we'll discuss, then we vote on, and then whoever we decide, then that's part of the final motion to include all the other boards and committees. Everybody with me?
Yeah, I guess you're talking about the planning commission?
Well, that's who I'm nominating for, but we'll...
Okay, well, I mean, that's...
Right.
That's what we'll find out in a minute.
Right. And then we decide, and then we roll that into the big nomination package. So... Let me make sure I say his name correctly. Consider approval of nominated applicants for service for boards and commissions from the Finance and Operations Committee meeting November 20th, 2017, along with nominations from the floor. Jeff Allen, Economic Development Board, Walter Heinsohn, Planning Commission District 7, Jennifer Bowman, Planning Commission at Large, Valerie Lynch, Board of Assessment Appeals, District 2, and Greg Fitzgerald, Board of Assessment Appeals, Number 7, District. For the planning commission, for the at-large position, I want to nominate Matthew Velkovich. Did I say that correctly, Karen? Well, anybody on the Finance Committee, did I say it correctly?
That's right.
Yeah, that's how you say it.
Any other nominations? There being...
I'm curious, that was one of the applicants that we had.
Correct. Any other nominations? There being none, I'll say why. And here again, I don't have a problem with anybody nominated by the planning commission per se. I'm sure everybody is of high character. I know that at-large position, the lady nominated, I know Michael knows her well and speaks highly of her. I know her husband, I consider him a friend. It's nothing against her, but with all the talk about the planning commission issues and this being the at-large position, I think it's important to have somebody that has knowledge of all the things that they have to deal with. The person nominated by the planning commission has no background in this. I don't doubt her integrity or character. I'm sure she would be giving every effort to try to be fair and neutral, but when you have no knowledge of something and you've got a lot of strong personalities there, and plus she does live in the heavily dense area of Fort Mill, that Fort Mill area, I see it's gonna be kinda hard for her to walk into that firestorm and be fair and equitable. It's kinda like comparing it to medical boards. We usually have seven members. Five of those members are doctors, and the other two are laypeople and/or attorneys. The reason we do that is because the doctors know the most about that profession, whether you're reviewing a license or new parameters that you can practice or whatever. So I feel like with this being at-large position, it's really important to get somebody in there with knowledge. And, you know, with the district selection, each council person has every right to pick whoever they want to pick. But I think with all the needs we have in the planning commission now, all the concerns about extremes, we need somebody with knowledge in there. And I'm not gonna board y'all, and I didn't call any council member to politic or anything. I just wanted the facts to fall where they fall. But when I look at this gentleman's background, and here again, I don't know the gentleman. I know Ms. Love knows him and speaks very highly of him, and she said he lives in my district, and I didn't know that, but whatever. But, I mean, he has experience over 25, 30 years on site development, land use studies, land development, master planning, due diligence reports, flood studies, environmental permitting, water, wastewater system development, urban dense site development, urban stormwater management, roadway designs, in addition to a lot of other things I'm not gonna read, but in his background, he's dealt with many county, regional, and state agencies with his job. So as far as the ideal person for this, I don't see that you could have a more ideal candidate. And I don't know the gentleman. I know Allison spoke very highly of his character, like I said, but his academics, his resume are perfect for this position versus taking someone that'd be kinda thrown to the wolves and has no knowledge or background in this, you know, just in her banking field. So I think it being at-large, it's really important, especially this time and this point where we are, that we get somebody that'll be very knowledgeable and at the same time be fair and balanced. So that's my reason for the nomination.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'll speak up on behalf of Ms. Bowman. I'm a little concerned by the fact that perhaps somehow, if you live in a district that is fast-growing, that is facing all of these issues like Fort Mill, that somehow makes you biased automatically against developers. I think what it does is it would have someone who has seen the effects of basically unchecked growth. And I believe what we all want up here, and I think this is unanimous, is we want smarter growth. I don't think anybody up here wants growth to continue the way it is. We all want smarter, better growth, and I believe Ms. Bowman would certainly provide that. Would Mr. Velkovich provide that? Certainly he could. He certainly has the background. He works for an engineering firm that works for the developers. He certainly has that qualification to meet the criteria that we need. I just believe that the Finance and Operations Committee unanimously, three to zero, supported Ms. Bowman over any other nominees, and that, and there were eight, seven or eight nominees, as I recall. And it was not that he was not qualified, it was that we wanted to have a larger balance. And I think that is one of the things we've talked about, is what should that balance should be? Should it be tipped in the hand of developers? Should it be tipped towards the hands of private citizens? What Ms. Bowman is, is a private citizen. She brings that perspective of a private citizen to the group. Certainly if what we want to do is replace a builder with someone who has industrial knowledge, then that is certainly what we could do. But my thought, and hopefully the full council will agree, was to bring someone who brings just everyday knowledge, driving down the road knowledge, which we need. And as I look at the list of people and who, you know, and kind of like throwing them to the wolves, this is a group of Larry Barnett had no experience before, Carmen Miller's a realtor, Jamie Hendrickson's a realtor, Tommy Robbins, help me, what's he doing?
Drilling.
He didn't have...
Drilling, didn't have that experience.
Drilling.
You had Walt Heinsohn, who's an attorney. I mean, certainly there is a, you know, Bill Hargrove's a developer. I mean, it seems to me to have a good balance, you have to actually work to have the balance. And in the past, we've had a very developer pro. I don't want to see it get to a point where it's eight non-developers and only one developer. There has to be a balance to this, but I don't, I think, I think that balance needs, at this time, needs to be more in the hands of your everyday citizen, and that's what I'm asking for. And that's why we nominated Jennifer Bowman.
Mr. Weakman.
As a member of the Finance and Operations Committee, I'd like to say as well, I support Ms. Bowman. It was great to have as many nominations, or as many applicants as we did, but I looked at it as a chance to do what we said and diversify the membership on that board. And not, you know, yeah, the gentleman that's there has a lot of knowledge, as Mr. Chairman Blackwell pointed out, but Ms. Bowman being from a banking background understands facts and figures and how to look at them and how to make a decision based on a fact or a figure. And that's what this is, is looking at facts and figures. And to talk about somebody who didn't do well or be getting thrown to the wolves because they don't understand it, I believe there's a person just a few seats down from me there that got their start in politics and is now sitting up here, and one of the first things they did was the planning commission board and didn't understand much of any of it when she got on.
Oh, let's see.
And that was Allison.
Oh, that's zoning.
Or zoning, excuse me.
Zoning.
Instead of planning.
Chad was planning.
But she was, you know, on zoning, which is even more technical, and if I remember what Allison said, when she got there, she didn't have a whole lot of knowledge about it, but she jumped in there and wanted to learn it and did it. And I expect Ms. Bowman would probably do the same thing, that's why she applied. That was, you know, that was my vote coming out of Finance and Operations, and that's the vote I'll still cast tonight, so.
Ms. Cox?
I have not had an opportunity to speak with, and one of the, one of the things that concerns me a little bit is that we had some representations by the folks from the FNO Committee come back and say, "We want to hear what council has to say. What are we looking for in terms of a committee member on the planning commission?" And what I had understood by that is that we would have some discussion about it and that we would, we would arrive at a conclusion as to what we're looking for on the commission. So I guess my position would be that we defer on this issue and make sure we get the right person. And here are some concerns that I have right now, because if we vote tonight, then we lose that opportunity. I reached out to Ms. Bowman and spoke with her. I think she's highly qualified. I think that there's no problem with her serving on the commission. I did not get a chance to speak with Matt Velkovich, and there were a couple of others that I did not get to speak with. Here's the concern that I have with the process. Council was notified by email that this position was open on November 9th. On November 20th, it was already voted on by FNO, so there was effectively 11 days for us to get folks to apply for this position. And if what we want is to give everyone an opportunity to apply and to make sure that when we fill a four-year term, that we're filling it with the right person, we can't go back and undo this, that we should look at at-large positions a little bit differently, but we should also have a standard of how long we're gonna keep a position open so that folks can apply for it. And in this case, it seems to me that 11 days was a very short timeframe, because I, as soon as I got that email, I sent out a broadcast email to folks in my district and said, "Look, here is this opportunity. Make an application." And it takes a while to get those things in, and it was already decided that the Finance and Operations would support this individual. I was, I was a little bit surprised by that, and I reached out to Michael, and I told you that I was surprised by that. So I think what we've got to do as a council is make sure that if we set a standardized, "Hey, you have this much time, or this position's coming up, we're gonna hear from everyone." And I understand that she lives in your district, and from my discussion with her, I think she would be great, but I think that what we've got to do is to make sure that we ensure that the process itself, and I explained this to her as well, that we do it in such a fashion where everyone is given full and fair opportunity to apply. So my preference would be that we defer this, because I haven't had a chance to speak with Mr. Velkovich and don't know what his position is on this. And council has not discussed it collectively, which is what I understood the committee wanted from the council before making this decision.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask?
Sure, let me make one point. So, I mean, if it came down to that, I would be okay with that, but that's only two, so if four people want that, you better speak up. Mr. Johnson.
I guess I'm curious how a deferral, if we are deferring so we can walk back here in two weeks and vote on the same two people, to me, that doesn't make a lot of sense. If your concern is, "Only 11 days, we need to take in more applications," then the motion should be, "I want to resend this back to finance. I want to reopen it for at least two to three weeks." We'll take in all the applications and we'll push somebody out at some point. If the motion is, "Nope, I just want to wait two weeks and we'll vote between these two," I'm at a loss to understand that. We, we, we've had two weeks to make the decision to do it. If, I guess if the argument is there wasn't enough time for people to apply in that 11 days, despite the fact that seven or eight did, and I had two or three in my district who did not get their applications in time, and they sent me emails, and I said, "I'm sorry, I wish you'd have gotten them in in time." I said, "But, you know, there was, there is a window. I don't know how long..."
What is that window? I mean, I guess, do we have a standard window? Because we've not followed 11 days before. I think that would be the appropriate discussion that council will have, and I think that's a good question, a good point, is I think that what we need to do is to ensure transparency, that we set a standard. When a, when a position comes up, we're gonna give it this many days so that anyone who is interested in applying can apply and put that in there so that every, so that we're setting a policy that we can stick to and that there's no, there's no opportunity for there to question any of the motives or, "I want my person in my district versus this person." And honestly, I think that council should, should consider maybe how we approach at-large appointees differently than how we do others. I think having a discussion would be what, what I would suggest that we defer it, is to have a discussion, to set some policies, and make sure that it's a fair thing across the board.
Roddy.
I would certainly like to speak with the two nominee, the two, I guess you can call them the two finalists, to kind of make a decision. 11 days really is not that great length of time, and I do think we should handle at-large positions a little different, because it should be a nomination from, I mean, all of us should have a say into the at-large seat, but if it was a district nomination, something came open, you know, it's on us to go out and find people to come in and apply for it, but an at-large position, and Kristy spoke of having a time window, a timeframe, you know, at-large position should be looked at for a period of 30 days. If Bill, who was in my district, was one of the, he's the at-large member that was stepping down, we should have a window of 30 days to say, "This position's open. All seven of us should know that it's gonna be open if we want to review the applicants, if we want to suggest someone come in and apply." We should have a window of, a timeframe window, at least 30 days. That's only two meetings that we're, we're a part of to say, "Hey, everyone's had 30 days to get the applications in. Now it's gonna close 30 days from the time the last representative says he's serving." And that will give us fair opportunity, because technically, I haven't had a chance to speak to Matthew, I haven't had a chance to speak with Ms. Boyd, so if it's gonna come down to these two, and I have heard from planning commission members of members serving that are pro-this or pro-that, and it's hard to strike a balance, and so this is a real important board, and I think we do want to make sure we get a good candidate. I don't, I'm not lobbying for Matthew, I'm not lobbying for Ms. Boyd, but knowing this is a critical position, I think we should do a little more homework with selecting this individual. So if it's two more weeks, or if we're gonna open the process back up totally, if we open it back up totally, let's give another two weeks to apply and then send it back to Finance and Operations. And if these two candidates come back out again, or if Matthew comes out, or if Ms. Boyd comes out, then that's what we will vote on. But just because Finance and Operations unanimously voted on one, that still doesn't mean that person should get the position, because at-large positions are pretty much decided by all of us. If this was a district-specific position or board, then I would respect, I would hope the rest of the council would follow my lead on who I would like to have serving my district, but this is an at-large seat, and I think all of us should get opportunity to weigh in on it versus just the Finance and Operations Committee.
Mr. Williams.
Yes, the, normally I don't do this, but when we had, there were seven applicants for this position, and I knew three of them. So I sent an email to the committee saying that I know, I know three of them, two of them are in the business, and Ms. Bowman was not just so happy that I knew both of these. And I guess what I, what I offered was, I think either one of them could do a fine job, that I knew we needed some balance, if we needed balance towards more citizens, that Ms. Bowman would be great if we needed more expertise. Mr. Velkovich would be great, although I think he's, he's, will represent the citizens as well. That's actually, that's, I mean, the board is, citizens is what we need on the board. The planning commission has a staff, it's our planning staff, but expertise is good to have, too. When you got expertise, there's, I mean, there's, we got people serving on the ZBA that were serving with Allison that have expertise, but there, when they get in that room, it's, it's all about this. Tom Smith did the same thing for years. He was a developer, no question about it, but I saw him make some anti-developer votes just because he was representing the people of the county. I still think either one of them could do. I assumed that because it came out of the Finance and Operations with Ms. Bowman, that they thought it needed a more citizen balance, which, you know, that's, I mean, that's what I assumed, and today I've found out that there was, there's some discussion. I'm actually comfortable with either one of them. Don't really have a problem with deferring, but I agree with Mr. Johnson, if we're gonna defer it, let's have a reason to defer it, and what is it we're trying to accomplish? But I, but I think, I think we need to set up some rules. I think it's gonna be longer than a workshop. We're talking about, we had a workshop Friday about changing some procedures. Think this is gonna be in line with that. In fact, I would hope that, you know, instead of making at-larges different, that we make all appointments the same. If I have an appointment in my district, I certainly nominate someone, but I certainly hope that, that if y'all know him, y'all would tell me, and that it's, I mean, because they're serving countywide, even though they're representing the district. But actually, of the two, I was comfortable with either one, and it came down for balance, and that's why, I guess we've heard from two of the Finance and Operations Committee members. I don't know if we're gonna hear from the other one or not.
What do you think?
It'd be a first.
Ms. Love.
It'd be a first if we don't, but...
Ms. Love.
Well, I just think that Finance and Operations Committee's doing y'all a big favor, because we have gone through all of the applications and kind of weeded out some things, and some, not necessarily people, but some, we've weeded up to some things, to some people that I think would be really good. And so to say that everybody wants to be really involved, I mean, do you wanna, how involved do you want to be? Because we've been working on this now for about a month. It's already been deferred one time, and so for you to jump on board tonight and say, "Hey, we need to look into this, and let's nominate somebody else, and let's, you know, have more say," well, we've been doing that, so where were you? And I think that we've got a very good selection in Jennifer Bowman. I think that Matt Velkovich, who is, I don't know him personally, I know him, I've talked to him just a couple of times, and I think he would be excellent, and I hope that we have a future, a future spot for him, a near-future spot for him, quite frankly. But I feel like I'm gonna stick by the person who I originally selected for this, and that's Jennifer Bowman, because I do think she brings to the, to that board the constituents' point of view. And I think that, you know, it's funny, you know, when I got on the ZBA, I really didn't know anything. What I brought to that, you know, there I was with a bunch of men who had a lot of technical ability and knowledge and had been doing things for a long time, so I kind of look at Jennifer kind of like I look at myself, and I was the common sense person and the only woman on that board, and quite frankly, I did get them to listen to me some, so that was a good thing. But I learned a lot, and it's, you know, the staff is there, and there's a, there's a little learning curve, but it doesn't take long to jump in and get to know those things. So I think that Jennifer is a good choice. I don't think that we need to delay, and I'm gonna stick by the vote that came out of the Finance and Operations Committee. I do, I do want to say that I understand the at-large versus someone from your district, and I think that the planning commission next to council is probably the most important thing, you know, ZBA and planning commission, those are very important spots for people to be in, and here we are talking about who we're gonna put on the commission, but what do we do once they get there? They never even really hear from us again, so, you know, here, we're all concerned about who we're gonna put there, but yet we give them no guidance. We don't tell them really, we never meet with them, and we don't tell them what our, what our goals are. So the way for the planning commission members, we could, we could pick, you know, somebody at random, and if, and if we do our job and we relay to them what our goals are, then we'll have a good, we'll have a good planning commission member out of any of those eight people that we were to select. So I like the idea that Jennifer Bowman is from a busy area, so she understands what happens when you, when you don't do the right thing, and I just, I think I'm gonna stick by that vote tonight, and hopefully we can finish this up tonight and move on. and move on to some other important things that we need to deal with as far as the Planning Commission goes.
Well, two quick points to make. One, the defer. So I heard, well, I said I was okay with it, so I've heard three. So it's, you decide, Chad, do we defer or not defer? Because then we move to the next if you say you don't feel warm and fuzzy about it.
Yeah, I mean, right now the motion is not to defer, it's to vote between these two folks. I don't feel, I mean, I feel I'm ready to make that.
Okay, so that answers the first part. The second part, I just want to end it up, well, per what Allison said, really to allow for the integrity of the system, we really, once we put them on the board, we ought to stay out of their way. I mean, they can always come for us and ask us, but we won't. In our position, we have a lot of influence, and we want them to think clearly and not be influenced by us.
I think, I didn't mean, I didn't mean for us to call them individually, try and train them to do what we want them to do. What I meant was for us to hold workshop maybe with them once or twice a year and/or invite them to a workshop when we're talking about our strategies and let them be fully aware of what our goals are. Because it's very important that the Council, the staff, and the Planning Commission be in sync and be consistent in things that are done. And I feel very strongly about that, and you'll hear that again.
And that's logical, but I still kind of go back to the point, we can be undue influence. That being said, though, just to wrap it up, and here again, once again, I want to stress, I have no issues with Ms. Bowman, other than she has no experience in this field, and it is an at-large position. Per the point that Mr. Johnson said, well, the fact she lives there, it might be a bias against her for living in that area. And, you know, I don't know if I would say it's a bias, it's a concern by me. But I would say on the same regard, with the qualification this engineer has, if anybody's qualified to serve on this Planning Commission, it would be him. And I'm concerned that the fact that he has such tremendous background and such knowledge, he's not being selected. But I'm all about a balance. I agree 100% about a balance, but I think at this point, with the two extremes, we need somebody in the middle with a level head and the knowledge, so that's my point. But, okay, we got the two nominations, we need to pick one, so for, sir?
So how do we do that?
I just bring them up and we decide, we vote right now.
You pull Ms. Bowman and Ms.-
Right, so-
-the candidate out.
All those in favor of Ms. Bowman, say aye. Raise your hand, so, okay, so she got it, so there's no need to go to the next person.
The only comment I'd like to make, the confirmed unanimity of the Finance Operations Committee helped my decision.
Okay, so now we need a motion for the whole package.
Motion to approve it is stamped.
Okay. And discussion?
I just made it. Motion to approve is written.
For all of them, for all of them, yeah, so it's then with the one decision.
So it's to approve is written.
As written.
That was my motion, to move is writ, to approve is written.
So you're good with that, right?
Yes.
Did I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Next item, Council to consider amending the title and providing second reading of an ordinance authorized in the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad lorem taxes agreement to provide for a fee in lieu of ad lorem taxes incentive to Project Anderson, including its affiliated and related entities, the inclusion of certain property in York County in a multi-county industrial business park, the provision of certain infrastructure credits, and other minors related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
On this one?
Ms. Cox?
I'm excited about this one. This one is for manufacturing and expansion that actually results in jobs that are going to be open to our folks. Is this the one that I'm in? This is Anderson, I'm sorry, this was for the last one that we approved, yeah.
East York, it's in my district.
Right, right.
But it was an excellent point.
But it is for manufacturing.
Excellent point.
Got ahead of myself.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Next item, consider third reading case number 1725, resound from UD RD1 at, okay, several. Alexander Love Highway in the York community, and also 1263 Gabby Ford Road in the York community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Next item, consider third reading case number 1726, UD rezoning project.
Move to approve.
Second, discussion?
Only discussion, I'd say like the-
Mr. Williams?
Sorry about that. Like the previous answer, this is the staff's hard work toward, toward rezoning, changing, updating all the UD zoning across the country. We just did, the county, we just did three and seven, coming soon to a, to a district near you.
Next item, well, wait a minute. Question, the motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? I was just assuming, sorry about that, Chad. Consider third reading case number 1729, resound from BD3 to RC2 at 4195, Buse Drive.
That's approved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Next item, consider third reading case number 1730 to rezon from RD2 to BD1 at 1970 Hare Road in the Fort Mill community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Next item, new business planning and development to present and counsel to discuss the stormwater utility district feasibility study. Ms. Miller?
Good evening, thank you, Council, for the record. Autumn Miller, Planning Director. Tonight before you, we have a stormwater utility district assessment report. This project was funded by Council during this fiscal year. This project fulfills some of the goals that have been identified by Council, the main one being to address growth and how to pay for growth. The Planning Department sent out an RFP, and the contractor was awarded to Walpert. When we did the scope of services, they established certain milestones, and this is one of the milestones for the project. Mr. Clarkson is here from Walpert, he's going to do a brief presentation, give you the overview and what the findings are. At this point, staff and county manager would recommend that we continue forward with the project, and we would be going to public outreach and then bringing back this, bringing this back before Council sometime in January for a formal vote on whether or not to form a stormwater utility district. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Clarkson.
So this is just for information purposes tonight?
Right, yes. We don't need a vote, but all we would ask, if you have any questions or concerns that you please let us know so we can also be working on those as well.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Chairman Blackwell, Council, I appreciate the time to discuss this matter tonight. For the record, I'm Hal Clarkson with Walpert. We also have Flint Holbrook here in Sig Hewitt with Cherthoff Newman, who was a partner in this project. Being respectful of your time, I'm going to move quickly through some information here. Obviously, though, if you have questions, please feel free to stop because I want to make sure I don't cover things too quickly. I tend to use a lot of acronyms, so if I say something you don't understand, just raise your hand and I'll explain. York County has a stormwater system approximately, I believe, 118 miles of pipes and drains across the county, including culverts, ditches, other structures, ponds. Your system is growing, as growth continues, so does the system. Any of your pipes that were put into the ground back in the 50s and 60s are now reaching the end of their useful life, and those put in the 70s and 80s are fast approaching. You have increased demands from both past and future growth. What we see across, all across the country, in fact, is when you have increased urbanization, you see increased flooding, which means that you have a need for upgrading the size and capacity of your system. There's a growing regulatory environment. You, the York County is a regulated community under the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, municipal separate storm sewer permit that's issued by the South Carolina DHEC. We have seen over the years that that permit continues to tighten. And in fact, this year you're required to begin monitoring in areas where there are water quality impairments and total maximum daily loads. And in fact, what we've seen in other regions in other states is what's coming next are planning regarding those impairments and what you're going to do about them, and then installation of some form of treatment device for that stormwater runoff that's carrying those pollutants of concern. York County has some wonderful natural resources, Broad River, Catawba River, Lake Wiley. In fact, you have a drinking water source here that obviously you want to protect. Doing so costs money. There are two general ways that communities pay for a stormwater program and operation maintenance of their system, either through general taxes or through an enterprise fund, also commonly known as a stormwater utility fee. In fact, if you look across the southeast, the 2017 Southeastern Stormwater Association Utility Report indicates that about 96% of communities in the southeast that are regulated under that MS4 program fund their programs through a stormwater utility and enterprise fund. So let's talk a little bit about what a utility is. There are three key factors regarding the stormwater utility. Number one, it's a dedicated funding source. As Council, you would establish what's going to, the revenues that would be generated by that utility and what those revenues are going to be used for. It's a stable funding source, it doesn't go up and down every year. It's based on impervious area, that being rooftops, asphalt, concrete. That's pretty well said, and as that type of material grows in your county, so would your revenue. So it's a very stable source of funding. It's equitable, which means that the funding is based off of how much contribution you run off in a particular parcel contributes. So it's based on your contribution to the issues and the amount of runoff that you could expect from a particular property. What I have here is a slide that gives some examples. These are not York-specific, these are drawn from other communities. But I wanted you to see kind of what you're looking at in terms of fees if you choose to go this route. The typical way of setting up a utility is to look at the average amount of impervious area, again, rooftops, concrete driveways, that sort of thing, associated with the residential unit. And in this case, we're looking at some national averages, and that's about 3,500 square feet, would be one equivalent residential unit. And if you charge those folks, all your residential properties in the county, in the unincorporated part of the county, $5 a month, that would be $60 a year. If you look at typical businesses and the sizes, and if you go to the very large down at the bottom, that's almost 10 acres of impervious area, 10 acres of rooftop and concrete. That would be 136 equivalent residential units, and so their bill could be as high as about $8,000 bucks. Just depends on, again, the amount of impervious area. Yes, sir?
One quick question. When you set the average residential equivalent unit, is there less than that? If somebody's in a 2,000-square-foot house, if our average is that, or is that just the base?
Some communities do a tiered approach, and so if you have some concern that you have smaller residences, I've seen communities, especially with large mobile home populations, that go, that's really not equivalent to a larger home. And so you can have a tiered residential approach. There's some trade-offs in revenues and other things with that, but you certainly can. You have three utilities already operating within your county, in fact. Rock Hill, Fort Mill, Tiga K all have stormwater utilities in place. You can see there the range of fees, everything from $42 per residential parcel to $108 over in Tiga K, generating somewhere between half a million and $4 million a year. Lancaster County just instituted a stormwater utility a few months back. Their rate is about $60 a year. I spoke with Scott Edgar, their county engineer, a while back, and they're generating, or he believes they're going to generate about $1.2 million a year. I said initially that there are two ways to go about funding your program. You can do a stormwater utility, or you can remain using your general tax funds, which is where you are currently. There are two notable communities here, Richland County and Spartanburg County, that are still using tax as their way of funding their program, and they're also regulated MS4s. The one thing I'd like to point out here is, in 2015, our firm partnered with another firm. We did a very similar needs assessment for Richland County, and we pointed out that they needed about $6 million a year to fully fund their program, and that's where they were in 2015. So they were right on target. Along came a couple of storms, they've had to re-budget and redo some things, and their rate, their revenues for their program dropped down to $4 million, and then in 2017, down to $3 million. And what I would point out is that their needs are still at $6 million. So at some point, they're going to have to play catch-up. Between tax and an enterprise fund, I'll talk to you about just a few advantages, disadvantages, I won't go over the whole list. Under tax, you obviously have some exempt parcels, churches and schools and federal government properties. Under an enterprise fund, everybody pays. The only exception that the state law has allowed is for designated farmlands. Now, it's not agricultural zoning per your zoning, it is a designation within the tax code for farmlands, and we've already looked at that. You have a few, but not terribly many.
And there's no way to exempt government agencies and schools?
That's correct. Once you begin, there's a way to address that. Once you begin exemptions, then it becomes essentially a tax, and you get into a little bit of an issue if you're, if you're trying to exempt particular properties even though they're contributing runoff. You can look at credits, and so I've seen communities give substantial credits to schools, especially if they can provide education programs that can be documented and used towards your MS4 compliance. Businesses and others that maintain controls on-site that address quantity and quality, if they can demonstrate that those things are operating and being maintained properly, you can give them credits as well. So you can, you can build in some credits to help people that way.
And my issue is, when you tax a school, what you're really doing is you're taking tax dollars from one pot and simply just moving it to another governmental entity pot. It's still tax, it's all tax dollars.
Or double taxing.
It's not a private business who actually has to figure out where that is revenue. If you're, if you're a school district, you're just, you're just moving around tax dollars. And as a taxing entity, I hate, I hate doing that. I hate going to a school district and saying, now cough up $8,000, $9,000 because you've got a high school. You know, and all of a sudden you've got to cough this up. And really what you're saying is, it just seems unfair to me to tax areas that have, to tax schools. So, but you were telling me, there is a way to create a system where they could, we could exempt them as long as they could qualify under some-
In general, no full exemption, but you could certainly provide credits. You can help them out.
Let me simplify it even more. What do cities in general normally do, with the schools within the city?
Excuse me?
City government, what do they-
Send them a bill.
Send them a bill.
What do they normally do?
Yeah, they normally send them a bill on, and it's usually on your water and sewer bill.
Yeah, so it's no exemption, no credits, nothing. They just say, hey, it's your building. So normally the city governments, from what you've seen, just, it is what it is.
That's correct. Now, some, I will say that some of these communities that we talked about earlier, they do have credit policies. I have not gone into each of those policies to see how they're dealing with individual situations, but most communities will have some form of credit policy to assist folks. The other item here, we're talking about taxes, is that if you do use an enterprise fund, it doesn't supplement your general tax fund, it is in lieu of that. And so whatever you're currently spending on your stormwater program is now freed up in your tax coffers. There is also, I just do want to point out, there is some operational cost with the stormwater utility. You have to figure out how much impervious area there is associated with your non-residential parcels and the average ERU, and that has to be maintained as new development occurs. You want to track that so folks are getting the bill. So there is some cost associated with the startup. When we performed our needs assessment, we looked at your current program. We looked at future needs based on what we understand about what's coming with the regulatory environment, looking at the growth within York County. You can see there some of the items that we laid out in the report. Similar communities of your size and nature across the southeast generally have a program around $3 to $6 million. And what we determined, if we look at all the needs, is approximately $4 million would be a fully funded program for York County. Going back to the ERU, we looked at, and again, this is based on some limited information. Currently, the information we have doesn't include all impervious areas, so we're having to make some assumptions. As that data comes in, we can refine these numbers, we'll do so. But in general, around $36 to $60 per year should produce between $2.5 and $4 million a year in terms of revenue. South Carolina averages, it says $54 a year, but I also know of several communities that have recently increased. In fact, I know of two communities that have doubled their, their fee within the last year. The average revenue from stormwater utilities across the state is about $3 million per year.
But unincorporated area?
That includes both, both communities, cities, and county governments. Those numbers there. We would have been remiss if we didn't look at your budget objectives and goals to make sure that a stormwater utility fit with those. And I won't go through each of these bullets, but I would tell you, if you- And I won't go through each of these bullets, but I would tell you, if you look through them, I think you'll find that the things we've pointed out in the utility so far, they match up pretty well with what you've stated your objectives to be. With that, we're kind of down to what's next. Well, obviously, we want to talk to the public a little bit, provide them with some information about the need and about how a stormwater utility operates, the advantages and disadvantages of that, get some input back from your citizens as to their feelings towards a stormwater utility. We would then, assuming that you choose to proceed, we would begin setting up the billing process, how you're going to get the bills in hands of folks, getting information out so they can begin to prepare. We often look at phasing of fees coming in. We realize going from zero to sixty can be difficult in a short period of time, especially for schools and others where they have budgeting concerns, so we want to be aware of that budgeting. It may be that you want to phase that fee in over some period of time. We would adjust what we know now based on any new impervious area data that we can gather. And then finally, we would create a draft ordinance for you to review and approve, and provide an appeals process for those that believe the billing has been accurately done, and then provide a credit manual, and that's usually based on your needs. Yes, sir?
One other question I've thought of. I understand it's based on my property's impervious needs, but if I live in a neighborhood, a subdivision that has multiple roads in that subdivision, who gets that bill, or does anyone get that bill for those neighborhood roads?
Right. Typically, roads are exempted, that those areas, because they're either owned, they're part of your system in effect, because they're collecting stormwater and runoff. However, I would say that generally homeowners associations that have swimming pool areas, clubhouses, those sorts of things, the homeowners association would be responsible for those impervious areas. And there would be a decision for this council to make if you had subdivisions with private roads, about how you wanted to treat those.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I think the next steps are critical. And early, I'm glad to hear that there's enterprise funds and that it has to go where it is, because when they first started, they came up with stormwater funds, a lot of jurisdictions put them in and just used them to supplement the general fund. So I'm glad to see that. That was a point that I'm going to make, I was going to make. I'm glad that I apparently don't have to make that anymore. But it is, the next steps, I think, are critical. The way that it works with not exempting anybody's schools is that, you know, the argument is, it costs us this much a year to maintain the stormwater coming from your facility. So if that's true, then those formulas need to be right on, because then you're not double taxing, because you can make the argument when they say, well, you're double taxing me by charging me this fee. I say, well, if you want to handle your own stormwater fee, then you can. But if we got those numbers right, that's good. I'm also interested to see what you're going to come up with the billing mechanism. I agree that the water and sewer bill probably is the easiest, but we got a lot of folks out there that have impervious surface that don't have water and sewer, so that's going to be...
Typically...
Talking about five dollars a month, you send out a bill for five dollars a month, you almost got billing costs up to, you know, that are taking a good, not a good portion, but an amount of that. But yeah, that's what I would like to see come out of it, is a system that handles our stormwater, not an additional way to collect revenue.
And if I may, I'll address the billing mechanism. Typically, what we see in municipalities where they perhaps own the water and sewer or everyone's own water and sewer, they attach it to that bill. Folks pay their stormwater bill first, then their wastewater bill, and then their water bill, so if it doesn't fully get paid, they can shut off the water and collect. Most counties that operate a stormwater utility that don't have a single provider will attach it to the tax bill. It's another fee on the tax bill, sometimes like your waste fee, if you have that type of a fee.
We collected for Tega Kay, the county, right?
Yeah. I just sent an email to Mr. Madden, asking him if we're still doing that. Because actually enough, we were, because they weren't billing everybody. Now they're billing everybody, so that's something that...
But they weren't getting a hundred percent collection rate either, and now they do.
That's true, too.
Anybody else? Okay, sir. Let me ask you one more question, since, I mean, I think the last stats that came out, we were the number one job-producing county in the nation. So when you look at the footprint, say, if we have a manufacturing facility that wants to come here, leave North Carolina, thousand jobs, big footprint, do you have, I might be off curve here on you, about how the county would deal with something like this? Would they just defer it for five years? Or, I mean, you got any examples of knowledge?
So typically, what would happen is, as development plans come in, so you've got an industry that's ready to build, and they submit their construction plans. At that point, you would begin estimating what that fee's going to be based on those plans. You can base it off of as-built. You can either wait till the next billing cycle. Typically, it wouldn't be deferred for an extended period, but you may not, rather than trying to send them a bill during, you know, halfway during the billing cycle, you may wait till that next time, the next tax notice when it goes out.
Yeah, assuming it's a spec building, and they move right in. I mean, do you have an example of a model where, like fee in lieu of, that would be part of deferment of fees to the company?
We have a variety of ways that you can apply credits. So for instance, if they were going to install water treatment devices, and again, if they're operating, maintaining those properly and providing some benefit to your system, or if they have detention facilities that's reducing the amount of runoff that's going to come from their property through your system, then you can provide those credits to them. We have a number of examples of that. I haven't seen a fee in lieu of where you go, if you do this, then you're exempt forever from paying the fee. I don't...
Or even if you don't have a demand, but if you're bringing a thousand jobs, we'll defer that fee for five years or something like that. Possibility, not a model you've seen, though.
We'd have to look at that very carefully, because again, it's kind of like the water and sewer bill. I'm not sure if you defer that water and sewer bill for an extended period of time like that. I know sometimes you do taxes and those sorts of things.
I think that's a great example, because the water and sewer bill, you can actually see that water going to a meter. The stormwater, you can't see. So that's why it's critical to get it right. If we've got the formula right, then we are spending that much money maintaining the stormwater for them, and all this is passed through.
That's correct.
If we get the formula wrong, then it's, then we're doing what you're talking about.
That's exactly right.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Next item, council considered providing acturism committee with up to fifty thousand dollars to update the study conducted by Crossroads Consulting Services 2008. This money will be paid out of H-tax funds as approved by the state.
Moved to approve. All right, next item?
No second?
No second. Purposes of discussion.
Discussion.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, the reason, we talked about this, the committee's been around since longer, or members of the committee have been. This committee's been around in one way or another, longer than any of us have been on council. And they've done three studies, and what they want to do is update the last one, which I think makes a whole lot of sense, because one of the big benefits was having an indoor arena, where Rock Hill is getting ready to build one. So this will consider that. And I mean, this brings the studies up to date and bases it more on what we got at the current. I don't think it's unfair, I don't think it's unfair for them to ask, and, you know, it's time to decide whether we want to, how seriously we want to pursue this.
Anybody, Mr. Winkler?
I'll have a question for our legal counsel. If I understood our meeting on Friday properly, there is a process for formulating an ad hoc committee, and that probably was not followed in this ad hoc committee, if I understand things correctly. Is that correct?
No, sir. I believe that Attorney General opinion that came out in October 2017 gives latitude to council to establish its own procedural rules, and therefore the appointment of the ad hoc committee, while maybe not following a favorable process, was not objected to and was established and has operated ever since.
Let me help you here, too. If I hadn't sent out a notice immediately when I did it, announcing it to council, there might be more substance to Mr. Winkler's argument.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? There being no...
Yeah, if we're going to talk about it, I don't support this for the same reason I didn't support it two weeks ago. And it's not that I have a problem with an agritourism facility somewhere. My problem is, we have a group, Hospitality Tax Committee, sat down, said, here are the three priorities. Y'all should study these three priorities. We have not studied these priorities. We have not looked at these priorities. We have not voted as a council to determine if we like those priorities. We have done nothing, except tonight, we have the possibility of giving fifty thousand dollars and basically declaring a winner. And if you don't believe it will declare the winner, I think that is naive. I think this will declare the winner, because it will be the only one that gets studied. And if you're not studied and you don't have any ideas coming forward, you are, by default, the winner. I questioned at our last meeting whether the chair had the power to create the committee. Apparently, unless we object, the chair does have that power, and which is an interesting thing. My problem, though, is quite simply this. If this council had a workshop, like we've talked about two or three times in a row now, and we said, and we voted to adopt the three criteria from the Hospitality Tax Committee, I would vote to approve money to be spent in those areas. But we have not. We've not debated it. I don't know what Lake Wylie projects could look like. I don't know what Kataba projects could look like. And if unless some money is spent to help hash those out, I'm never going to find out what those look like. All I'm going to find out is what a fifty thousand dollar update to a study tells me should happen for agritourism. This, if it, and part of this was, it was like, well, we'll have the debate. We will have the debate. We're not really going to have a debate tonight. Tonight, we're going to debate agritourism, but we're not going to debate the other two because we don't know anything about the other two. And you can't debate what you don't know anything about. I think it's improper to grant this money, not, and this, and just because we say, no, you can't have it until council actually decides it is a priority, doesn't mean you're never going to get the money. Just means council hasn't voted yet to make it a priority. And I'll be voting no. I would have voted no two weeks ago, and four weeks ago, I'd have voted no, based on the sole reason is, we as a council have come to no agreement on even adopting the simple plan recommended by the H-tax committee.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I guess, I don't look at it as picking a winner. I see where you're coming from. I guess the way that I look at it is, this committee predated that recommendation from the H-tax, and they're ready to go, and they're a lot further ahead than the other two. This does not mean we can't come back and study the other two. I would have a great concern if this was not one of the three that they recommended, but this is one of the three that they recommended, and we can do it in pieces or we can do it together. My fear is that we've been dragging along this committee for a long, long time. Like I said, it predates this council, and if we defer it, I mean, if we don't want to do it, then let's, you know, let's defer it or vote against it, because I think that's what they need to hear. But if we defer it and wait for the other two to catch up, I mean, I think there's two ways to go. I prefer that you go ahead with this one and then have the discussion. We need to have the discussion and not just automatically assume we're going to do the other two studies. But I think agritourism is at least a third of it and is as important, and that's why I just want to make the point that I don't see this picking winners and losers. I don't think, I mean, if we do this study, that does not preclude us from studying the Kataba River or Lake Wylie or anything else we might just have during the discussion.
Well, plus, this study may end up saying it's not worth doing, and then all the energy's just to the other two options, although we'd certainly spend a lot of money in Lake Wylie, and the Kataba region is our natural thing, and the Katabi Indians, you know, that would be a natural, but, you know, anybody else want to speak?
Yes.
Mr. Roddy?
I did have a question. I mean, I made a couple notes on this as to, has council made this, has council made this a priority? We've heard that the H-tax commission, you know, I said this is one of the three areas, but I agree with Mr. Johnson, council has not had those very discussions to say we're going to jump, jump feet first, or this will be a priority of the council. I like the fact that we talked about, you know, protecting the process, you know, have we went through the process of vetting and doing whatever to say, let's take the next step? And just because we have a study from 2008 doesn't automatically tie us back into continuing with that study. And if this is going to be an area that we're going to go into, yeah, let's spend the money, but we haven't had that discussion with council. So I'd be a little apprehensive to spend the funds at this time for updating the study if council haven't had that discussion.
Messel up?
Well, I just want to clarify that the lake and the area, Lake Wylie, are two different things. So when you say we've spent a lot of money in Lake Wylie, that's not even part of the discussion tonight. What we're discussing is Lake Wylie, the lake. And at the last council meeting, I asked for, personally, a workshop so that we could discuss all three of the things that the Hospitality Committee brought before us. And if we're going to discuss all three of those things, then I'm going to amend the motion to ask for fifty thousand dollars for each of the three tonight. I don't personally think that we should pay in this out of hospitality dollars. To me, it doesn't matter what fund it's in. It all came out of a taxpayer's pocket, and I am opposed to spending that money until we have had a discussion and discussed it further, and where we have heard from, a little, maybe a little more from the Hospitality Committee Chairman, and a lot more from the people who are here on council, who were elected to represent the people who will be ultimately funding this research. So I just want to say that I think it's very important that we look at all three, and I'm for all three. I think agritourism is a great thing. I don't know exactly what the definition of that looks like visually. I don't know what Recreation for Lake Wylie looks like visually, and I don't know what the Lower Kataba River looks like visually. My suggestion would be to have a study to show us what's going to benefit York County the most, and maybe it's a piece of each one of those, maybe it's two parts of, you know, half and half of two of those. I don't know. I have no idea what that looks like. So in my opinion, we are blindly looking at something just because it came up a few years ago and because we think that Tryon, North Carolina's got it going on, and we think that the Raleigh farmers market is a great thing. You know what? Charlotte's got a farmers market, too, and it's closed for the next six months because it's a very seasonal thing. So I think that to, you know, to look at this doesn't require a study first. I think it requires some discussion amongst us first.
Well, let me say, Mr. Representative Tommy Pope sent me a text saying he hated he couldn't make it tonight, so he would have been here if there was a question. I didn't ask him, but I guess he was being conscientious. But here again, let me just wrap it up by saying, the acturism committee, I had no clue what acturism was when I got on council. But when I'm hearing people say, well, the 4H kids have to go to Chester or Fairfield County, they don't have any place in York County, and all the other comments, and then all the things that were done ten years ago, and then I hear all the issues, well, it was killed because somebody's land wasn't put there, or the territorial stuff, I didn't get it, they were going to get it, so I killed the whole thing, all these things. You know, I would just like to see us do things that are just good for the county. I don't care where it's put or what district it's in, I'd just like to see something good for the county, especially when it's complementary to the cities and their tourism, things related to sports tourism. I mean, we spent a million dollars on a swimming pool that we had no business spending H-tax money for to dry up the pot, and we went ahead and without reservation, spent the money. We spent money on a field with school in Fort Mill. That's not going to have any return on tourism. Yeah, I get it, it can maybe with tournaments help them out a little bit, but it's going to be nominal. So my whole drive on this was listening to the people, and all these committees that were done, and then having Representative Pope call me up and say, we really need this. And I said, well, Mr. Pope, or actually, I said, Tommy, Tommy, if you feel like it's a need, then you want to chair a committee? He said, yes, absolutely, I'll chair it. So that's how it came about, and then he selected the people that he thought would be good to study it, one way or the other. So that's how it came about. So that's not saying, no, we can't do anything in the Lake Wylie area. That's not saying, no, we can't do anything in the Kataba region. I've looked and talked about having airboats go from Riverwalk over to our land on the other side to have a Katabi Indian village. That doesn't mean because I'm for this, I'm against everything else. This is just one peg, one notch, to do something that may be very beneficial to the county and complementary. This study may come back and say, nope, it's not worth it. But I don't want to be closed off about it because, you know, well, it's not listing all three right now. And by the way, I asked, could they study all three, Bill? Did they say they could do all three?
I'm sorry. Thank you. I have not talked to Susan about that.
Okay. Well, so that's, okay, well, let's either vote it... Okay, well, let's either vote it up or down and be done with it, one way or the other. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, no?
No.
No.
So... Who said aye? Raise your hand. So four to three, it passes.
So are we able to put on the next agenda that we could get $50,000 to study the other two? And $50,000, you know, it, maybe it doesn't sound like a lot when you're talking about county government, but you can ask the Lake Wylie Chamber, it's a hell of a lot.
Well, don't you think staff needs to look into whoever would be able to do that? Whether you call them back and ask them, and how much do you think it would cost, and absolutely.
In, in reference to the...
Let the, let the staff, if they say, "Well, we don't have the information by the next meeting," give them some breathing room.
I do think that we should have the same committee looking into these things. I don't think dividing this up and splitting it all up is going to be beneficial, and if what council needs to do is to now re, to, to establish a committee that has input from council, that...
Isn't that the Hospitality Tax Committee?
But, but...
Well, I mean, I, you know...
I think the H-Tax people are the ones who, who recommended this, but we're challenging their recommendation on that, so... I, I guess, to me, I think I would like to see this, and I can only speak for myself, is that I do think that we need to be very careful about who are on the committees, to ensure that they are unbiased, to make sure it's not folks who have property that's connected to it or adjacent to it that stand to benefit from it monetarily. That takes the, that takes the complete transparency away from folks be, making sure that what we're looking at is something that government ought to do and should do, and, and I think that we ought to look at the committee structure for dealing with that. That was my point.
I have no issue with that. I mean, if we find out that the same group, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, just as a reminder, and the reason we haven't talked to them yet, sir, is we don't know they'll be doing the group, uh, follow, uh, doing the study, uh, following our purchasing processes, we'll, we'll have to put out an RFQ.
Oh, you, you're doing an RFQ?
Yeah, they will definitely have, they did the original once, I'm assuming they will have a good shot at it.
I would assume, too, that they'll be a lot cheaper, because they don't have to start from scratch.
Yes, sir, and so, but based on the time it was done, the fact that it's our property and we can share it.
And they're just gonna do an enhancement. Mr. Williams.
Oh, I was just gonna say, uh, the before, I, I think the other two are important, but I also think what Mr. Johnson says about having the discussion and, and verifying that's good. I also liked an idea that Ms. Love had about if we're gonna have a study, study what we have and, and, and see if the study agrees with, with those three recommendations. I personally, I mean, I voted the way I did, because, like I said, I've heard agritourism since I've gotten here, saw what BMX did. Um, I think it's, I think it's the same, I think we're gonna find the same thing for the river and, and the lake. I also think that we have other assets that we might could, uh, accentuate, um, and, uh, but I'm not there where, where, where I am. I'm, we can jump to that and, uh, um, probably be right, but if we, if there's anything we can do right now to, to, to get a better idea, um, um, for that. I mean, putting $50,000 on each at the next meeting, I'd feel a little uncomfortable with, without some more information.
Well, and here again, I think the ones of us that voted for this are not saying we just want tourism. We're open to anything that'd be better for the county. I'm sure I'm speaking for the other three.
So that's why a more general study would've, would've made more sense to say what, you know, not to say, "We want you to study agritourism."
Not really, since this has been there for so long, I mean, we still can have a study.
But because you've been looking at something for a long time, doesn't make it the best thing.
No, but it doesn't make it the best thing, but that's what the study's for.
No, the study should say, we should say to whoever's gonna do the study, "We would like for you to tell us, what do you, what are our assets? What is the best use of our assets?" You know, these are some of the things we've thought of, but what are the best uses of our assets? And it becomes an umbrella study that encompasses those three things, and maybe some things that we haven't even thought of yet.
Well, Bill, can you check with them to s, to...
I would, in fact...
You can use them as a model to check and see if they could do something that globally, and then you could do an RFQ.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, was you just, I would recommend that you direct staff to look at all three of those issues, even though we're moving forward with the one, and see what we come up with a good direction.
Best model to go with?
'Cause, you know, we're, we're looking more and more like a recreation department with these things coming in, just, I mean, it's, you know.
Well, one thing that was clear from the comprehensive plan, uh, public hearings is that, that there's people in the county that want recreation, and some of them are willing to pay for it, so that, that's necessarily a bad thing. But just like everything else, we need to move in the direction of, uh, of meeting, meeting the citizens wants as efficiently as possible.
Yeah, but here again, just like we have Ebenezer Park, which, without a rec department, I think if we did something like this, or something else in the lake area, or something on the Kataba River, we could follow that model. We don't need a rec department. That's what the cities do, and they got their sports tourism and their ball fields and all that. We don't need that. We just want to be complementary.
Yes, sir. I just didn't want to backdoor anything or make anyone think we were doing that, 'cause that was said in the past.
Yeah, but I would just stick to the, what we're saying, look and see if, using the group that we've talked about, using them as a model of information to see if this is a, something that they can handle, and then we can take it from there.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
Feed back to the council at the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, it, today is December the 4th. We're gonna meet again, and on December the 18th, I doubt, we're gonna have a strategy on December 18th, which means we'll meet sometime in the middle of January, and 45 days will have passed. And I, I have a sneaking suspicion that when we meet in the middle of January, we're gonna be no closer to studying anything else but the agritourism than we are this. I think what we need, and I, and I don't say that to be, to, the vote is the vote. I, 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 I move on, but I'm asking that we do, that we have, that this council sit down and say what we want. No, other than saying we want agritourism, tonight, the council said, "We want agritourism." We have not said we want Lake Wylie tourism. We have not said we want any other type of tourism. All we said tonight was, "We want agritourism." That was the vote of this council tonight. So I'm asking that we actually have a workshop of some sort, in, whether that's in January or February. Let's, let's have a discussion so we can figure out if, if the other two are, can, can manage four votes to get their shot at being studied.
Um, I don't have a problem with that, but maybe what you find out, I would think it won't take two weeks to get an answer from them. I know the getting process...
There is no doubt whoever we put it out to would say they could do it. That, that's a given.
Well...
Base, I, I mean, they're gonna get paid for it, I mean...
Well, this is, so you have to deal with that kind of group, so, I mean, you know, it's gonna be a group of group of group that does all three, so...
What I would like is, kinda like Councilman Johnson said, is to give us a little time to review what was said by the H-Tax folks when they discussed it, ask a couple of questions, a, and, so if we do have a workshop, we can give you some information.
Well, that's, the directive of the council's been made. We voted.
Yes, sir.
So now you, you look and see if they can do it, but we move forward.
Yes, sir.
If, if they say that...
I'm in favor of a public workshop as soon as we possibly can have one.
Yes, sir.
I don't have a problem with workshops, but, I mean...
Can we, can we also follow up with Duke Energy to see where we are on that land donation?
Allison, we'll look at that, yes. Now, all of that needs to be put together and give you one workshop with one direction.
Well, maybe, when you find out, when you find out if that's something they can do, maybe we need to have a workshop for you to feed to us all the things they said they can do for the three areas, and then we, you know, we can come out that way. I mean, you know, this doesn't have to be contentious. I mean, this can be just something very positive, and we move forward. Just, we just need to give you a chance to kinda look into it a little bit.
We'll give you, hopefully in two weeks, we can give you goals and directions, what we're looking at. I don't know if we can give you everything what you want in them, but at least we can tell you which way we're going.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, the next item, if I didn't skip a page, I didn't, is three. Council to consider a resolution consenting to and acknowledging notice of the assignment by Crescent Lake Mont East LLC to Genuine, Genuine Parts Company or its permitted designee of a fee in lieu of ad lorum tax agreement and other minors related thereto.
Let's approve.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Cox.
If I'm reading this correctly, um, it, it appears that this is to, um, allow a distribution center. All the jobs are transferred. There's no new employment that will be brought for existing folks. Um, and the, the average wage amount seems to me to be fairly low. So I'm not sure we're, why, um, why we think this is a good deal for us, and I certainly don't think that we ought to be using funds for this type of development to go into the Product Development Fund. I understood the others. I understand manufacturing. I get all of that, but when it comes to distribution and warehousing in this particular project, I cannot support this.
This is, this is an assignment of an existing fee to a, a different company. So this is a, just a, an analogy and a contractual or specified right in the existing fee agreement to, to, to assign the interest to this Genuine Parts Company.
I think I voted against this one last time, too, so this is a continuation of my vote against that.
Any other comments? Question on the motion, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Next item, council to consider adopting inducement resolution identifying a project to satisfy the requirements of South Carolina Code Annotated, Section 124440, so as to allow investment expenditures incurred by Project Anderson, including its affiliated and related entities, to qualify as expenditures eligible for a fee in lieu of taxes agreement with York County, and to commit to enter into necessary agreements with the company to effectuate the intent of this resolution and other related minors.
Let's approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question, yes, Ms. Cox?
This is the kind of development that I think is helpful to us, because it does result in increased, um, manufacturing, and, and I'm excited that we have this on the agenda.
David, I don't want to ignore you, since all this is, you got enough, okay. All right. Question on the motion, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Next is committee reports, the Honorable Michael Johnson, Finance and Operations.
Finance and Operations met today at 5:00. We considered applications for service from the Board of Assessment of Pies. We nominated Scott Childers of District 3. For Kataba Regional Workforce Investment Board, uh, all of those are at large. Don Austin, Alton Johnson, Jason Flora, and Bridget Miller all received nominations. We did an annual review of the York County Planning Commission. It was their turn in the rotation, and we, um, I apologize. We did not receive applications from one, two, three, four, five of the nine members. We instructed, um, Clerk to counsel to politely send them all a letter and remind them that they can be removed from a board or commission for not bothering to file a, an application. We also considered some, uh, ethics, uh, issues, and it was the recommendation of the administration that there were no ethical issues.
Is that it?
I did.
Um, next item, council member knew non-agenda comments. Anybody have anything they want to talk about for the future?
I just wanna make a comment. I, I noticed tonight, we did something for the very first time we haven't done in six, seven years. Yeah, was the debate.
Well, at least you and I, seven years. As long as we've been here.
I, I think that's a, that's a good thing for us, because it shows that we just don't rubber stamp everything. We will at least talk about it, hash it out, and I'm sure this one incident is not gonna divide this council on any terms, any, anywhere along the way, but I just, I was just smiling on the inside, because I noticed we haven't even went down this road before. I think it's a good thing to have that, have those discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Roddy.
So I have a question.
Ms. Love.
After our meeting on Friday, I'm, I'm not real sure yet of the process, but I'm, I'm wondering if it's okay with council, if the zoning committee looks at, um, just reviews the process for, um, things coming before the, um, before the planning commission, just to look at that process, because there's some other ideas that people have, other council members have brought up that we would like to, um, ask staff to, um, look into with council support.
Can I add to that, too, that, I think for the most part, the department's been pretty proactive, but anything in a district councilman that, I mean, when it comes forward, is the staff to consider? And I guess there's a little bit of a trail in there anyway, but if it could be just that one extra sta, step to give a heads up to every council member when something's coming before the planning department to be evaluated, even if it's zoning by right or whatever? Am I making sense?
Yeah, I think we're doing a monthly report that does that already.
One of the things that we were, that we were wanting to include in that was what Chad was saying in the meeting, where there was a little more involvement by the, the, um, zoning committee when things were, when things were presented. I don't, and, and I don't know exactly what I'm talking about, but that's what I'm asking.
That's what we used to do it.
Yeah, if I can, if we can, if the zoning committee can look at how it used to be done, and then some other ideas, um, that had been, that had been presented to us, just to get the, do the homework.
And to go back to what I was saying, I know there's been an effort by staff to give each council member, "Hey, heads up, you know, this is coming before you." But if you could make sure there's some kind of matrix in there, that nobody's missed, and it's, it's always done at the start, instead of, you know, "Okay, now we've gotta come through the planning commission and..." Am I, I'm getting the look like, reflection. We're good?
No, we understand.
Okay.
We get a pretty submittal email from...
Well, and I get all that. I mean, it's, that's the point I'm making. We're so busy with all our private businesses and stuff that, you know, maybe it wouldn't hurt to just have that added little, one little step email to that council member, just to, you know, "Hey, if you hadn't read all the stuff we've sent you, you better wake up and pay attention to this one."
Oh, you want a reminder?
Yeah, at the start.
Yeah, this, this middle request is good enough for me, if that saved you any work.
Any other council member comments? There being...
Is this the right, is this the right process to do that, to ask that question? How do I ask that?
Well, we're talking about a change in it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you asked in a...
Talking about a change in it, but right now, this is what we've been doing, so...
Okay. So is it okay for me to schedule a zoning committee to discuss those things?
Is that okay with the will of the council?
I would say yes.
I, I don't, I, I, yeah, I, I think that'll work. I mean, it's not for voting or action, but informally, I think the council I hear will see a lot of nods.
Yep.
Next item, citizen concerns, and nobody signed up for that, and reminder, that's for, uh, citizens that just want to get it off their chest, but it's not on the agenda. And so do we have a motion for executive session?
Motion going to executive session for receipt of legal advice regarding condemnation project number 11149-001, Track 20, and receive legal advice regarding council interaction with boards and commissions.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We'll be back in 10 minutes. And we have one a, action item out of executive session. Do we have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move that we condemn Track Number 20 in project number 11149-001, and authorize a settlement offer as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? If there's no further discussion, uh, council is now adjourned.